Gland you lead the flag of the United States of America and to your body for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer please.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the stay and all that you do for us. Please bless all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Roll call.
Bob Arlet.
President.
Scott Gutshaw.
Here.
Lisa Nutson.
Here.
Steve Nutson.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Hebe.
Jim Steele.
Here.
Public comment. Everybody has three minutes to speak. If there's anybody who would like to approach council, I need your name, your address.
Now?
Yes, Randy.
I'm not allowed to publicly speak, but my name's Randy Gutshaw. I live South Grand Street and I came to speak about two subjects. Cats that are overrunning town, not just in my area, but everywhere. You don't have to go far to see them. They're, people's feeding them all, which they're doing that out of compassion, you know, for the animals. I've had pets for 50 years and I've got nothing against, you know, any cats or dogs, but something needs to be done. I spoke with Rex Fink and he said there's nothing on the books about cats. Something needs to be done. I think, I'd like to maybe see, you know, there's a couple organizations that takes care of animals, you know, like that, but they're full. And to get anything done, you almost have to go to Clearfield to get a cat, you know, or an animal spayed or neutered, and that's 75 bucks just to have that done, if you can catch them. I've trapped a few of my own because the neighbors wanted a cat and we wound up catching four cats. Three of them, the guy released at his brother's farm out of town, which he wanted them. The other one, we went over to the SPCA, got a voucher, took it up to Clearfield to get it fixed. So it's a home, it's an in-house cat now. It's the right thing to do, but not everybody does that. And you don't want anybody, you know, being cruel to them. There's enough talk of that going on, you know, poisoning them, killing them. But something needs done. I'd like, I'd like to maybe suggest it to borough contract with a vet and maybe have a clinic in town, maybe once a month for anybody that can catch a young stray cat and wants to have it fixed. Maybe something like that could be done or looked into. Another thing I'd like to mention is bikes in town. I, I'm new. I'm not the only one that sees bicycles, whether they're electric, gas, or whatever, on the sidewalks, zipping in and out of traffic, cutting across, cutting across streets, you know, without any care about, you know, what might happen. But if you hit one, then you're in trouble, you know? And once again, Rex said the only thing is, on the books, that bikes aren't supposed to be on the sidewalks. Well, you know, then something needs to be done to enforce it. You know, I know it takes manpower to do that, you know, but I don't want to see anybody hurt by zipping in and out of tra- uh, traffic, you know, and getting hit. There should be some sort of regulation about how fast, how fast they can go and it should be, you know, lights on them or something. You know, there's gas-powered ones, battery-powered ones, foot-powered, even scooters, you know, battery-powered scooters. They're just everywhere. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is, but I just came to mention it and see if something can be done.
Thank you. We'll take that to law and ordinance and see what we can do.
Okay.
Anybody else? Your name and where you live, please.
Yes, I'm Chuck Lindine and I live at 327 Bratton. I own 17 rentals here in town. And I get charged, we pay their trash and their sewer. And so we end up getting fined for bags without tags, hundreds of dollars. And I personally, we had a fire up here on Shaw. Sorry. But I was out there and we put our trash out. We have all of our tags and we make sure. One day I went out there on trash day and I looked and there were 10 bags sitting there without tags from a neighbor. So, but they come and they pick up all these bags and I said, well, there's 10 that this guy didn't put a tag on. And it wasn't me that didn't put the tag on. Okay? And I know in, you know, I'm originally from California and I've lived in other places and they've never had a system where you have to put some kind of a tag or a sticker on your bag. They have a flat fee and people, I mean, waste management makes a lot of money. And they make money because they charge every household a flat fee to pick up their trash. If they have a special pickup, then they might have to pay something extra. However, it, it just doesn't seem right that I would have to pay for somebody else's neglect. You know, tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, why should I have to pay for somebody else's neglect? And if the borough could look into what the price would be to have a flat fee, where the homeowner would pay the flat fee and those, then they just come and they pick up the trash. There's no, you know, trash is trash. You know, I don't want it laying around. I don't want my neighbor's trash in my yard. I'm glad that they put them in bags and they put it out to be picked up, but why should I have to pay for their trash? That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
My name is Steve Arns. I live here in this town. First comment. You guys had a safe, safe trick-or-treat through town. Called Safe something there. It was a good thing for the kids and that, but there's one big problem that, which I did not like. Cars were going through town with all these little kids through there. And I don't know if you remember what being like, like a little kid. They don't care. They just, you know, they just go anywhere. Next time, I would suggest you block off all the streets coming up to, what is that, Market Street? Okay? Your next comment is to thank all who voted here on Tuesday. I want to thank all because you have shown every American in all the country what a bunch of low-life scumbags you truly are. Yes. When you elected a pedophile, a town blaster, a rapist, a slumlord, and the biggest one of all which you guys are supposed to be against is treason.
Steve, I'm going to interrupt you. That has nothing to do with the agenda.
Doesn't matter. I don't have to-
It does. You're out of order.
I don't have to speak to the agenda. It's public. I can say whatever I want to.
Yes, you do.
Wrong.
Mark?
No, I know. I already checked it out.
Does he have to speak to the-
It's supposed to be a [BLEEP].
That's it.
Can you have him escorted out of the place?
Freedom of speech. I have the right to call anybody.
You have the right to hear your opinion from this group. You're not going to be disordered.
That's true. Doesn't matter. Freedom of speech.
You're insulted.
Good.
I need you to come up with it.
Nope. I'm going to. Nope, can't. It's freedom of speech.
Thank you.
I will leave or you're going to be forced to leave the building.
Steve.
I can walk you out, but I can escort you out in handcuffs.
You can escort me out in handcuffs, but I'll tell you what.
You don't have to use that language.
Sorry. It's freedom of speech. You can't do that. Freedom of speech. Doesn't matter. Freedom of speech.
Need a leave.
We'll wait till the rest come back to be resumed to me. Anybody else would like to address council this time? Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve that or does anybody want to bring anything out of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Fire chief.
Month of October, city responded to 30 calls for service, 22 in town, eight out of town. Four fires, five medical, three MVA, five automatic fire alarms, two gas odors, two local alarms, one fire monoxide, three brush fires, two transfers, and two police assists. Heritage responded 22 calls, 19 in town, three out of town. Four fire calls, three medical, two motor vehicle accidents, five automatic fire alarms, three gas odors, one local alarm, one fire monoxide, one spill, one transfer, and one public service. Last week, we had members of Heritage and City attended a training session down at Station Two on May Day. It was a good turnout from the borough. I didn't make, wasn't able to attend, but I know the city and Heritage went and learned on the May Day call, which we had a May Day call on the Valley Street call that day. This past weekend, there was members attended an EVOL class. So there were people at their emergency vehicle operators course, which is required to operate apparatus in the state of Pennsylvania or a CDL. The city's boat is in service. They had, the builders came down two days and took members out and ran up and down the river. I was there for the one evening. I didn't personally drive it yet because maybe waiting for a little bit, not just warmer weather, but I didn't feel like eating multiple bugs that night, as Steve can contest to that, at that time of night, you know, it's a little bit buggy. I am planning on being out of service. I've already contacted, I talked to Chief Orlett and my two other chiefs, 24 November to 8 December.
Jeez.
Going south for Thanksgiving. And I had talked to you before about, I'm sorry, these aren't very big, but what I'm asking for is, we talked about getting a department patch. This is what the department patch looks like. Send them around.
It's going to stick.
I'd ask and mention before, I got a price on 100 patches at $3.31 for a total of $331. And there is a setup fee of $20. So I'm asking for a council to purchase these patches, 100 patches at $351. And my intent is to hand them out to each station. You know, I'm not saying they have to replace them with their own department patches, but company patches, but I would like to see these uniforms also. So what I'm asking for is if the borough council agrees to purchase 100 patches at $351.
Motion to purchase.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And I also got prices on some stickers too, which I'll look into later, but I think I'm going to, I'm going to put the bill for those. So we have stickers and I'm actually getting one. It's going to be 24 inches tall. I'm going to put it on the door downstairs. Okay? Any questions for me, yours?
It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's a question.
I'll shoot, I have them send the bill here or to me and then I forward to you. How do you want to do that?
I'll take the bill.
Okay. All right. I'll have it sent. I'll have it sent to me and I'll give you-
Do you have the company name?
Uh, yeah, I do. It's a gentleman that works with Pachute in Arundel County. He's from Spring Grove, Pennsylvania. The company name is Sweet Medical Jobs, Spring Grove, PA.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
As you guys know, the fire department is very special to me. So when this arrives, I'd like to reimburse you from the bill. That would be my donation.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Moving on. Mayor report.
Don't have a whole lot this month, but I did want to mention about the Veterans Day celebration that was held on Monday at the historic courthouse. It was up in the courtroom. It was very well attended. There was probably between 70, 80 people there. There was a choir group that came from Snyder County and also Junianna County that performed a lot of patriotic songs, which was really nice. Guest speaker was our own veteran, Ed Mann. Yeah, he did a wonderful job telling about his experience and the fact that even though he could not go overseas and solve the fight, he was able to train the officers, the veterans to go over there as soldiers. So it was a very, very moving type of speech. There was staffs fight at the end of the ceremony, which is always very, very touching to close out the evening. Refreshments were served following the ceremony. That was my contribution, along with one of the girls from the Mifflin County High School team club. So it was a very nice, very nice evening and I was real pleased to see the amount of people that came to celebrate our veterans. We have a lot of veterans in our area. If you're aware of that, that there are a lot that have served from before and now, and we should be very proud of what they're doing. So we'd like to honor them. I saw on the board that Todd had put up there, I wanted to remind everybody about the ICE festival coming up. That would be Thursday, December 5th and Friday, December 6th. Also on Saturday is the Quanis Pancake Festival at the First United Methodist Church. That starts at 7:00 in the morning and goes till time of the parade, which is at 1:00. So it's a lot of really nice things coming up and I hope that all of you will be able to attend them. It's a, it's really neat to go downtown and see thousands of people down there. So just like the old days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Please, chief.
Look at our statistics for October. It's 105 calls for service, 92 traffic citations issued, 39 non-traffic, 36 warnings issued, five DUI arrests, parking tickets written, $6,270 was the total, and we collected $3,660 in October. For the drug report, we had five new, or active investigations, five new investigations, one undercover, five, four felony arrests, two misdemeanor arrests, three search warrants, approximately four grams of methamphetamine, 1.5 grams of crack cocaine. And our investigator also made two arrests for Megan's Law violations and one for a tax denial, which is person not to purchase a firearm. Just a reminder of our weekly lottery we post every Friday on our Facebook page. So if you want to go and see a little more detail about what the officers are doing and some of the incidents we're handling, it's in there every Friday on our Facebook page, 100 Littlestown Police Department. Philly Cruiser event will be coming up on December 13th. That's a Friday from noon to 6 at the Giant down in South Dorcas. And just a reminder of suspension of street sweeping. We'll start on the 11/24. And we have a resolution for a grant application. I don't know-
You want to do it now?
Do you want to bring that up now?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's a resolution for the K-9 grant, right?
Yeah.
For to resubmit to LSA for the K-9 grant. It's just a resolution giving our support for the police department to apply. So.
Well, fortunately, we weren't awarded the grant from last year, so we're reapplying for next year. We have a resolution that Mark drew up. We'll have to have it signed if it's approved. I don't know if it has to be added as an agenda item since it wasn't on the agenda.
I would say do a motion to amend the agenda to discuss it and then if somebody wants to, they can make a motion to adopt.
Do I need a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'd like a motion to add it to the agenda.
A second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I need a motion to accept the-
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Bob Arlet.
Yes.
Lisa Nutson.
Yes.
Hebe.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Jim Steele.
Yes.
Scott Gutshaw.
Yes.
Steve Nutson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hang on, chief.
That's it. Thank you.
First solicitor.
I think everyone has in front of them some changes to chapter 24, the fire department regions that have been, you know, been worked on through the law and ordinance committee. You'll notice that there's some red changes. Those are the ones that you saw last month or the month before. The changes in green are the newer ones that are just being brought forward tonight. The biggest change here really is in the selection process for a new chief. It abolishes what we called the screening committee and essentially has council, after whatever, you know, type of advertisement they deem appropriate, will be the one to appoint the chief of the fire department. That is, the biggest change is getting rid of section 24-8. Also tonight, I'm just flipping through to see what's in green. Oh, the chief is to review and approve equipment purchases in excess of $5,000. And there should be a monthly financial report given to the chief from each of the member fired companies. So those are, those are the proposed changes. If anyone has any questions.
So this ordinance has been hanging out for over a year. So we, we need to have a motion to advertise this so we can adopt this in December. And then hopefully by the end of the year, we can go through the interview process with the members who have already submitted their name for the position. And then we can close this in 2024 yet.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I went through this today thoroughly and I'll make the motion to go ahead and advertise.
I have a second, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
So we'll advertise this for the first meeting this summer.
Yes. So we probably won't.
That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Borough manager.
All right. Just a couple of things. Last week or week before, we were, the borough was awarded $300,000 for the LSA grant. That will go for our stormwater portion of our DEP consent order to clean and televise about $300,000 worth, which will be, most of it will focus on the Edgewater Basin and then lead us that way towards the West End, obviously to see how far we can get. And then we're going to look for additional grant money to finish that piece of the consent order. North Pine and North Walnut alleys paving, I know that that's been a discussion. I just wanted to bring that back up. I'm going to get with Ben and get a couple of other alleys out to you guys to look at about possible spring paving. We have some money in the state liquid fuels that we could utilize for this. And I got a quote for North Pine and North Walnut. It was roughly about $35,000 to mill that completely and put a base, put a top coat on. That was roughly 700 feet. So it came out to about $50 a foot per se, when we're thinking about it in terms of length. So I'm going to get with Ben, get with Summer. We're going to kind of get a, a money figure that we feel comfortable pulling out of state liquid fuels. And then in December, I'll bring it to you for approval. And then we will get that to put out to bid and then it can be a spring project when the weather starts. 2025 meeting time, date discussion. There's been some talk about trying to maybe condense a lot of our meetings into just two monthly meetings. I did kind of share with you kind of a draft that I came up with. We talked about being maybe the first and third Monday of each month and trying to incorporate a lot of our, you know, our second Tuesday, the third Monday, the fourth Thursday meetings, all into one centralized place. So this was a draft for you guys to look at, discuss. We talked about maybe putting like finance streets into your first Monday of the month. Third Monday would be kind of like the law and ordinance rec board discussion. And then at the end of each of those meetings, we still have a regular business meeting to vote on like, you know, schedule payment of bills, anything that we need to get approved at that point. So I just want to open up for discussion. If this is something you guys are interested in, if, you know, you have, you know, we could spend the first hour of that meeting talking committee stuff, discussing stuff, at least, you know, everybody that's around the table, being able to have that discussion and then move into a more of a business meeting on the back end of that.
I know this has been discussed. I mean, what do, what are we, how's everybody feeling about the draft?
I like the idea a lot.
Mark, would this work with your schedule?
Yeah, I believe I looked at that and it was going to be fine. I feel like I have a struggle school up to January. So you're saying you're doing like the first and third?
First and third.
I appreciate it taking away from Wednesday since I have a fam meeting and, you know.
Well, and it's, we're just scattered, right?
Yeah, we always had them on Mondays. I don't know how they got them. Yeah, I appreciate that. Fine with me. Are you still going to do them at what time? About 5:30 or 5?
Council, just, the question is, do we want to keep the 5:30 or can we go to 5 o'clock? Counsel, just, the question is, do we want to keep the five thirty or can we go to five o'clock?
I'm okay with five o'clock.
I'd like it better at five.
It's you guys, it's up to you guys. It's all depending on how early you guys can get. Bob, what do you think?
You're talking the regular council meeting.
Yeah.
So you would kind of spend that five to six timeframe talking committee, and then, you know, six to six thirty or beyond is your business meeting portion of that.
So what day would that be?
Be Mondays.
Like the first and third Monday.
First and third Monday.
Now, there is a couple like with Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Labor Day. I moved it just to that Tuesday.
So we won't have any meetings on Wednesday?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I have Burnham on the first Monday, but it's not till seven, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Is everybody okay with the five o'clock start time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, can you do five o'clock or?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Let me say we're on combined committee meetings.
Down here at the bottom.
So I guess, I mean, essentially it's going to be a borough council meeting, but first Monday you'll discuss finance issues, streets issues.
Plus, yeah.
Right, and then plus your business.
Yeah, I mean.
I like that law and ordinance are wrapped together.
Yeah, because most of those people double up.
Yeah.
So then we kind of eliminate you guys being, trying to keep track of thirteen different meetings over.
That's like the right thirteen, we will need cupcakes, that's why.
What do you think?
So I'll share this out and then I'll put this on, this, I'll put this on next council meeting for approval then. And then we'll get it advertised, five PM start time.
I could do four thirty if that's what council wants to do.
That's up to you guys. I mean, you could do the four thirty, five thirty committee time, and then five thirty to six would be your business, your. That's all you guys.
What about you?
I'll make it work. That helps Mark do that.
I want to help you out.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine it's going to go from four thirty to seven, so. Mayor, is four thirty okay?
Yeah.
If we would start?
Four thirty?
Yeah.
For real or are you just a joke?
No, for real.
It's a fake one, it's fine. We'll make it work, yeah.
I'll bring it back then the next, I'll bring it back and we'll get it. I'll turn it off. Thanksgiving Day, obviously, is coming up, the end of the month. Borough Hall will be closed. I will be asking for approval here at the bottom of these for, Borough Hall always closes the day after Thanksgiving. The employees in the building use personal time, vacation time that day. So our street departments, wastewater treatment, they still work, but Borough Hall is closed, so I'll ask them to. And then one other thing, you guys got an E's group, kind of engineers report. We're working with GSL on our grant application. I meet with them next week. We're meeting with thirteen of individuals. They're coming here to meet with us. I have a meeting set up with Penn Vest to talk with them about some different options for funding. That's Tuesday. Tuesday evening, we're talking with Dairy Township, just kind of shoring up our nineteen eighty-two agreement, making sure that it's on the same page with the ads.
What's the nineteenth?
Is that the nineteenth?
Yeah.
They've been recommend, we're going to get out of here quick.
Yes, yes, it's not till six o'clock. So we're working on the grants. Obviously with the Penn Vest, we're waiting, we're awaiting a DEP permit to get the, everything out to bid for the digester with the roof. Tom and I were just discussing before this that we're, he's waiting on that. It's going to, they quoted us a wrong pump because they went off a fifty-foot digester, and ours is a sixty-foot, so the pump ruined size, obviously, because, you know, we've got to push stuff a little further, so. We're working on that. I have a meeting with him next Wednesday with E's, so we'll make sure that everything is rolling with that. Tom, anything else I missed?
No, that's it.
Okay. Good deal. So that's that. I'm going to go down through these consideration for approval. We go, we did letter A to Chapter twenty, to advertise Chapter twenty-four. B, and I don't know if you guys want to take these in a group, if you want to do them individually. Letter B is to recommend approval for a decorating committee to deck the downtown with Christmas decorations. I was approached by Brittany Hall to kind of turn downtown into a Hallmark scene almost. There's a committee of individuals that are looking to just kind of decorate, put some decorations in the downtown area for the festive season, so.
Why don't we get down through, let's get down through all of them and we can take it. Is that okay, Mark?
Uh, C there is to fix the street sweeper. Right now it's down. It needs a new shaft on the pump motor. Cost is five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents. The guy that runs the street sweeper right now, he's still out and about in the evenings, we're cleaning inlets and stuff like that, so he's just not quite doing it the way he'd like to do it, nor is he using the one that was on the pictures earlier when you saw it. Letter D is, this is just asking for approval or an authorization from me and Summer to kind of work with GSL. We're going to be kind of on a deadline with the LSA application here at the end of November. So I'm just asking for approval to authorize us to work with GSL, to submit the proper paperwork and make sure that's, that's submitted and all that, all the paperwork needs to go with that. Uh, E is to recommend a contract with Imagine Tech Consulting for Accufund support. This is Jim Fosselman helping us kind of clean up some of the things in Accufund and work on some little projects that we are assigning him there. Letter F is to approve the twenty twenty-five holiday recycling schedule, which should be in your packet. They've been, the girls in the refuse office have gone through this a couple of times. This is just for the holidays that our guys are off when the double route days are and all that good stuff. So that's there. Letter G is to recommend approval to consult with Cohen Law for our Comcast audit and negotiations. This is for a ten-year contract. The twelve thousand five hundred and eighty dollars is at a fifteen percent discount. If we have them do both of them, I believe we roughly get about a hundred thousand dollars each year from Comcast, so if you think about it, in ten years, it's close to a million dollars that we get from Comcast. They're asking for twelve thousand five eighty to complete the audit and do the negotiations. Anything?
The boroughs worked with Cohen Law Group for at least the past two, maybe three Comcast negotiations. They've, I mean, I'll say they've done well for the borough. They got the, the EG channel up and running. They've, they've done some other stuff, so, you know, I, I think that it probably makes a lot of sense. As Mr. Fink says, it's a, it's a lot of money at stake, and they know what they're doing, so I, I think it's worth the borough's outlay of that money to have them, you know, make sure things are going as well as they can for the better.
Yeah, so that's that, and I think we even look back to see what we paid them ten years ago, and it was, was it nine, right around nine thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah.
So they're not, obviously, with where we live in. Recommend approval to approve IGS is our electrical supplier. Yesterday I was on a call at like two o'clock, like trying to get this price nailed down at point zero seven seven five zero. I told you before, I've learned a lot about energy and natural gas in my few short weeks here. The guy that I'm dealing with at IGS, he actually called me this afternoon, and it's pretty much like a stock market, and it's, we're up and down. So the market is currently up just a tick right now. So I don't know if we want to amend this one or if we want to, if you let me, I may not lock it in tomorrow, but I'm going to wait until we get back to this cost. This is the lowest he's seen in a while. So we were at point zero six six two, I think it was, for our last contract, and this was the best price that he's seen so far. So I was going to go for a thirty-three month contract. We have the ability to what they call a blend and extend in the middle of a contract. If we see something happen in the markets and the prices are dropping, we have the ability to jump in at that price and blend slash extend our contract from there, so.
So I want to entertain a motion from A through H at this point.
B through H.
I'm sorry, B through H, yes.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The last four we'll take individually.
All right, so letter I is to just recommend approval for the sale of twenty-two Ridge Road property via sealed bids at this point. I don't think we have to have a minimum at that point. That one is, the appraisal wasn't, wasn't where I think it, where it's going to be a little higher, so I think we just put this one out for sealed bid and see what we can get back.
Counsel wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. J?
Letter J is, we can discuss this, I, I think I interpreted it wrong, and Mark cleared it up for me today. We can't put a minimum on this. If you want to put a minimum with this sealed bid, do we put it, advertise it with the minimum?
I would just, yeah, I think I would probably advertise, you know, minimum bid of X.
Of X. Can I not say what that minimum is?
No, I would put it in there, yeah.
I'd like to see no less than fifty thousand to start on that property.
So do we want to amend this? This recommendation?
Yeah, I would just say with a minimum bid of fifty thousand or whatever counts, so.
So that's, I'll look for a recommend or approval then to amend that, to add a minimum of fifty thousand for sealed bid.
So I'm a.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Yes, Jim?
I just want to caution you folks, if you're going to move ahead with the sale, to look at maybe stipulations on that, because once you sell it, it's out. So just be thinking about that if you're going to do it. Thank you.
Now let's to amend it, now let's.
Now we need a motion to start that sealed bid at fifty, so.
So I'm a.
All, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Are we going to put stipulations on it?
We did.
We did, I got. I have a hard time here.
Well, for price, we did.
Okay.
No, no, we didn't.
K and L, I have these as a letter of support. It's, Jim, correct me down there, it's more of a resolution?
Yes. Last round, and you were able to receive three hundred thousand dollars. There were eleven hundred projects for three hundred and forty-five million, so, you know, trying to get a piece of the action here. The two entities, the embassy and City Hook and Ladder, are both individual organizations. They are not eligible to apply on their own. So we need counsel to apply on their behalf. So it would be a resolution. Both of them are coming in at a million dollars. The LSA overshare account application also has a one hundred dollar fee. So whether you folks apply for it with, when you're doing with GSL, you have to put in a hundred dollar fee, and we'll need a hundred dollar fee for each of these. Pretty sure that we'd be able to get reimbursement, but when you're ready to submit electronically, that's when you would do the actual fee. So it's a hundred dollar application fee that you'll have to do right as it's ready to go.
One question.
It would be by resolution that counsel would need to apply.
Uh, one question, young man.
Yep.
That was K, correct? And embassy and city's involved in this.
K and L, yep.
All right, so that covers all, so.
If, if you, we would have the vote, yeah.
So we need a motion to add, to make a change to this and add it to the agenda, move it into a resolution. So I need that vote first, amendment, or motion first, and then we can move on to actually doing it.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Now, what do you guys want to do?
Make a motion, we proceed with it.
Both have a?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, aye.
Pose.
Then the last one is recommend approval to close Borough Hall on Friday, November twenty-ninth, the day after.
We just did that, that's a good idea.
Need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, we're going to adjourn for personnel and legal matters in executive session. We're recessed at this point.